Okay, I'll call to order committee of the whole for Tuesday, January 28th. Let the record show that all committee members are present with the exception of Alderman Anastasia, who is absent. Item number one on our agenda tonight's PL 0420 by Mayor Alio to authorize the mayor to sign a continuing agreement between the city of Olian and state of New York in connection with Consolidated Section 5311 Program Appalachian Development Public Transportation Assistance Program Supportive Employment Services and Operating and Capital Assistance Projects for the Olian Area Transit System. Mayor?
We have Carrie talk on this one.
And this would be covering fiscal years 19 and 20. Just as a reminder, the sources that currently working on the application, the federal Section 5311 Public Transportation Funds would be in the amount of 164,500 for both years respectively. The Supportive Employment Services would be in the amount of 140,000. The Appalachian Development Public Transportation Assistance Programs would be in the amount of 15,500. And then the New York State Transportation Operating Assistance Program would be in the amount of 277,000. We would also be applying to replace three buses. We would be purchasing three. The replacement of two buses that are paying up, they're cast as the state DOT useful like guidance, which is seven years or 200,000 miles. And then the third bus would be our one that would be from we have peak hours and our other buses are out, but they need very year to inspections. So we would be applying up to 0.5 million and the Officer General Service will be releasing the contract awards. So that way I'll know how much the upcoming buses will be for them.
Carrie, how long until the, so we do this tonight, how long until the new buses are in service?
Well, how it works, we have to purchase off of the OGS contract. We have to go through the procurement process and that takes about two months to three months to get through DOT. And then at that point, the bus gets ordered and the contractor who orders award is that by OGS, they actually have to build the buses. So that could be six to eight months would be late, but normally it's expected to a year refund.
Carrie, would it be a huge expense? I know Allegheny County has their wrap, you know, around their bus. I remember we talked about that, but we never did it. Is there any chance of us being able to put a different kind of, you know, healthy living or something on our buses?
I think our office has been working with the city attorney on that. I have an art written. We just have to work through some details to see who would be the entity that would receive the funding from those advertisements.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Carrie? Okay, someone like to sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Sponsored by Alderman Witt. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So seconded by Alderman Doherty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, 0420 is approved and will be referred to tonight's regular meeting. Item two on the agenda is PL 0520 by Mayor Alio to authorize the transfer of 10,448 from general fund contingency to line item 7150.444 for costs associated with the purchase and installation of two new Zamboni batteries. Mayor?
We discussed this last week in committee and this is just a formal part of it to a resolution or appeal to authorize a transfer from contingency into the equipment account over that.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you. I was talking to Alderman Doherty earlier and I talked to a couple other Aldermen and I would like to amend it or add to it that we would like at the end of the year to put any encumbered funds from that department and that line or other lines back into contingency. We also talked about that last year and I just thought it would be who of us to put that in writing and to amend that PL.
I would add not to exceed the amount that we're, sorry, not to exceed, I mean you said any amounts, but not to exceed the $10,448. Is that correct?
Basically, we want to make, we want it in writing that the one bucket will pay the other bucket back at the end of the year. And that we won't go over by this. Okay. Nick, any, any comment on how we word that or feedback on?
Well, I had a Nick John suggestion of looking at it not to exceed the amount. If you could, if Fred Snyder properly explained this, he would automatically, if it was unencumbered, go back into surplus or the fund balance. So the resolution would specifically earmark it to go, I guess, back into the contingency which is traditionally used for end of year projects. And I think that's what you guys are trying to replenish that fund with any, is there a lot of the, correct?
Yeah, and within this fiscal year too, right? So, and that, that would be maybe a little tricky. I don't know how that would have to be worded because typically at the end of the year, right, it rolls over into the general fund. But is there a way that Fred could transfer, you know, look at the balance in the account prior to the end of the year and roll that back into the contingency line?
That's what we talked about.
Essentially make it a loan, right? Out of the contingency, put it back into the contingency because I think there was an expectation that this, that the ice skating rink would generate probably additional revenues as it's a longer operating season. So I would be in favor of that.
I'm in favor of it too. My only concern is are we painting ourselves into a corner?
How so?
Well, I mean, I don't know. I guess I'm just kind of thinking off the cuff here, like what if some other issue comes up and we want to use that funding for something else and we've already earmarked it for that? I don't, I don't know.
My, my thought is that it, this PL might not, first off drastically changing it like this, it might not be, we might not have the ability to do it without maybe re-advert, you know what I mean? Because don't we have to post a lot of our proposed legislations in the paper and stuff like that? So a drastic resolution change versus some minor numbers and decimal points. That would be my one concern for the city attorney. But the other one would be, we're not moving it, revenue doesn't flow into these line items where we're these expense accounts. They're coming out, we would want it to come out of revenue. The revenue line item for that and then into the contingency.
We would want to, we would want it to come out of whatever is under spent budget in that department.
Right. It would be encumbered funds at the end of the year.
Instead of the revenue line.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I missed that, right? So if, not to exceed this amount, if there's under, that department is under spent and there's remaining budget, say in May, when's the new budget start? June 1st? So going into May, if there's $10,000 there, we transfer that back in.
And assumedly that might almost be as April. I don't know when the hockey season ends and things like that, when, when the season would be fully, you know, they're not expecting much more revenue after that point.
I mean, I think Paul brought up a valid point, I think it was Paul, the last time we talked about this. Yes, the contingency budget is for situations like this, but we also do use it to tap into it for special projects at the end of the year. So I guess I would be a little skittish of starting to spend down the contingency earlier in the year and then because we've gotten used to hitting some bigger projects at the end of the year, sometimes vehicles and things like that.
I'm, I'm in favor of it. I just, I want to make sure that the language we use in the resolution, whatever we're adding right now, is as unambiguous as possible and it's extremely clear. I'm just worried that we're, if we're going to just throw this out here right now and amend it right now, you know what I mean? Well, I don't know, maybe that'd be, maybe we need to give it a little more thought than this, but.
Or authorize it to not exceed that amount?
Yeah, once we do this.
Do this, they do another, they would push a PL or a resolution.
Right. So we can, yeah, we can buy the item now.
Where they're going to come from, are they going to come out of revenue from the?
Or at the end of the year encumbered funds.
Right. So we can figure that out later and at least just amend this one to not exceed the amount that's on the page in front of us.
We could do that. Just vote it through and then we'll put in a new proposal saying, right?
I don't think we have an issue on, I think we're all in agreement that this is what we want to do. I think it's a matter of.
I'd like to see the final wording before we end it.
Yeah, in this way it secures the funding at least so they can go out and buy the batteries right though. And that's ultimately what you guys need to do.
Okay.
Make that motion.
Okay. So moved by Alderman Witt. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Crawford. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, and 0520 is approved and will be referred to tonight's regular meeting. I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Witt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Adjourn. Okay, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the common council for Tuesday, January 28th. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Here.
Alderman Panis?
Here.
Alderman Doherty?
Here.
Alderman Crawford?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Here. Please rise for the invocation. I am honored to resume carrying the torch providing the invocations for the city of Olian's common council. An invocation is an invoking speech to call upon a higher power or to call to action or to loyalty to the masses. As a religious figure would call a deity or the congregation as a whole, I as a governmental official shall call upon the highest power I can fathom in a democracy. My invoking speech tonight will be, and future speeches, will be directed towards the citizens of this great city. An excerpt from John F. Kennedy's inaugural address in 1961. "In the hands of my fellow citizens, more than mine, will rest the final success or failure of our course. Since this country was founded, each generation of Americans has been summoned to give testimony to the national, to its national loyalty. The graves of young Americans who answered the call to serve surround the globe. Now the trumpets summon us again, not as a call to bear arms, though arms we need, not as a call to battle, though embattlement we are, but a call to bear the burden of a long twilight struggle, year in and year out, rejoicing in hope, patience, patience in tribulation, a struggle against the common enemy of man, tyranny, poverty, disease, and war itself. In a long history of the world, only a few generations have been granted the role of defending freedom. And so, my fellow Americans, ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reading, correcting, and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
The regular meeting of the Olian Common Council was held on January 14, 2020, at 6:40 PM. Present, Alderman Gonzalez, Alderman Witt, Alderman Panis, Alderman Doherty, Alderman Smith, and Alderman Anastasia.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
So seconded by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Committee reports and unfinished council business.
We have none.
Communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Paul. I just want to read this into the record. This is from Robert Bell, Fire Chief, City of Olian. This is the day of January 16th, 2020. I wish to formally rescind my resignation from the Olian, the city of Olian until February 3rd, 2020. My last day of employment as fire chief of the city will be on Sunday, February 2nd, 2020. You should accept this letter as a reaction on my resignation letter. I'm looking forward to continuing to work on transition of the newly appointed fire chief, one of whom. I also have on the agenda tonight, and I will be asking you to approve my appointment of Lieutenant Tim Richardson as the Olian Fire Chief. That'll be coming up.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Miscellaneous communications.
We have none.
City official reports?
We have none.
Proposed legislation and referrals.
PL 4-20 by Mayor Alio, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, January 28th, 2020 by council president. PL 5-20 by Mayor Alio, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, January 28th, 2020 by council president. PL 6-20 by Alderman Anastasia, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, February 11th, 2020 by council president.
Okay. Before we begin the public comment section of the meeting, I'd like to first offer an opportunity. Anyone on the council, if you'd like to make a comment, please do so at this time.
I'll go to Paul.
Yep, Alderman Crawford.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to the police department and the fire department, all the first responders that took an active role in the structural fire on Buffalo Street a week, week and a half ago. I was called upstairs by my children who was looking out my, their bedroom window and said, "Something's on fire." And so I got my jacket on and went down to the corner of Winters and Sullivan Street and I saw an absolutely chaotic situation, but our men and women, first responders, couldn't have been more professional and brought some aspect of calm, if you will, to an absolute chaotic scary situation. And I stood there and watched them so well organized and it was very impressive and I want to say thank you on behalf of Ward five. Luckily, there were no fatalities in that fire. And in fact, I think the mayor told me that even one fireman went into the burning building to save a dog and rescue a resident's dog that was trapped in the bathroom. So I, again, I say thank you for that. Moving forward, I want to urge this legislative body to make a policy holding owners responsible for burned down structures and properties inside our city instead of leaving it for city taxpayers to flip the bill. As you remember, we took possession of three blighted houses from the county and we have limited funding to address and demolish blighted houses in our budget. If we are left with this one structure, it'll most likely zap that funding because the structure is so large. And if history serves us as a signal with this particular landlord, the city will be left stuck with the bill on that one. And it's not fair to the taxpayers and it's not fair to the city, quite frankly. And so we need to do our job to try to find a way to start holding people accountable for their responsibilities instead of on the back of the taxpayers. So I would hope that moving forward, we can try to come up with some solutions for that. Thank you, Paul.
Good. Anyone else?
Yes. I wanted to take a moment to remember the lives of one of our regular podium speakers, Mr. George Carlson. Multiple times a year would make appearances here. He passed away on January 17th of this year. Now, while George was, in my eyes initially was, came across as an angry individual, I look back at it now as a passionate individual who may have pointed out inaccuracies with the city, but he was using the tools that the city gives him to speak out and speak his mind at the government that he elects to put forth legislation and make his community more beautiful. And so to George we remember and I want to pass my condolences to his family. Thank you.
Anyone else on the council? Okay, seeing none, I will open the public comment section now. If you have something you'd like to say, please approach the podium, state your name and address and you'll have five minutes. I'm aware that we did not read that. Does anyone have a public comment they'd like to make? Anyone? TJ? Of course, yes.
I figured you would, so. After about 36 years, I think some thank yous are in order for me here. It's tough. July 1984, 9th, I think it was, the good Lord put me on a journey. Two brothers who cops, one was across the park, my dad was across the yard. And my mother actually cried when I didn't take the police test, so. So first of all, five mayors, 42 Aldermen, about 17 department heads. I want to say thank you to all you guys. You really made my job easier at times. One time, going from budgets that went through pretty well to one night, 27, 28 budgets one night, almost midnight there. I truly believe that all of us have had the heart of the city. Whether we disagreed or not, we always had that there. Thank you, thank you all. Second of all, Alderman and Tim, I feel good leaving you guys in those hands. I feel worthy of that. To the seven civilian fatalities. It's tough. Especially to my nieces. There's that part of the job that I feel I let the people down. Now, I'm just a little bit more happier. I can't thank you more than enough that the good Lord put me in the hands of a great bunch of people to stay in one quarter of life, a battle. Thank you for allowing me to continue on with that journey. You don't owe much, I mean, we've been together since 74? 74. Thank you. It's time to move on. Love you, dear.
I got it.
Sure.
I got five minutes.
You have five minutes? As long as you give us your name and address.
I'm Jerry B. Paul Mabel, a representative from our region. I apologize for the dress code.
We have no dress code.
But I want to, I just want to thank, the part you've talked about, things up here about, well, you've done 36 years, you know, you've extended his life, which was wide. But I just wanted to tell you that the fire department is what it is from some of the stuff that Fire Chief Bob Bell has helped to do. Fire Chief Bob Bell and myself, not always a great, I, I, Mayor Alio can attest to some of that stuff, I'm quite certain. Bob Bell, or Fire Chief Bob Bell's hired me, actually hired a guy that's going to be taking his spot, Tim Richardson, Dave Francher. I don't see what I mean. So, but I just wanted to say this, local 1796, the Fire Department, we've got to where we were, people in the council and from help, dedication from Chief Bob Bell. So the union wanted to extend a thank you for service and in gratitude for everything the county and the city as far as union, the fire department, and the department. So Chief, good luck, brother. I don't ever do good. You have a great career coming forward. I definitely thank you, we're not in a good hand. Tim, well, Chief, thank you very much from everybody.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Larry Mack. I live on Homewood Road in Cary, Carolina. I've had a few issues here with the city of Olian, just to discern what needs to be addressed on this one. And I know that a lot of times whenever I obtain information from the city of Olian, I have a piece of information. Just earlier, I heard from the transportation, I'm funding the middle of that, the dollars and ounces she mentioned below. And I don't want to wait too long because it will probably go in the archives. This is a server, probably tell me to wait even longer. So all the numbers that she just recently read on the grant funding for the transportation, I was wondering if the council had it, the board on it or whatever, if I asked her permission. All the numbers that she mentioned have a potential date. And I did not know if we need to talk to the city attorney or if we need to talk to the transportation person. So I made this the president.
So, yeah, I would refer you to the city attorney initially. Obviously, I'm not prepared to give you a full answer for what you're requesting right now, but.
It was all stated here at a public meeting, so I think you should have.
That is correct, but I would refer you to the city attorney at this time. I really don't have anything other to, you know, to say other than that, so.
It'll also be in the minutes, which will be out in about two weeks.
Yeah.
All the numbers that were there. Thank you very much.
Also, most of these meetings are recorded. They're up on YouTube, so within 48 hours, if you want to listen through the entire meeting, you could drop them down just as a point of reference, so.
Sure.
Sure, sure, of course.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, I will call the public comment section closed. We can move on to finance and bills.
The auditor, the auditor has processed bills and claims against the city of Olian as per list submitted to each Alderman and will commence payment thereof. Whereas, the auditor has presented to the common council bills and claims against the city of Olian, totally $939,701 for the budget and will commence payment thereof. Now, therefore, be resolved that the same be and all hereby audited and allowed and the auditor is hereby authorizing directed to draw warrants for the payment thereof at the amount set opposite each respective plan. We're going to sponsor.
Okay, so we do need a couple sponsors. Would someone like to sponsor finance and bills?
I'll sponsor.
Sponsored by Alderman Doherty. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Alderman Panis.
Will the clerk please call roll? Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yep.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carries 6 to 0.
Okay, resolutions.
Resolution 4-20, PL 4-20 by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Doherty, to authorize the mayor to sign a continuing agreement between the city of Olian and the state of New York in connection with the Consolidated Section 5311 Program Appalachian Development Public Transportation Assistance Program. Supportive Employment Services, operating and capital assistance project, projects for the, for the Olian Transit System.
Okay, so we did discuss this in committee of the whole a few minutes ago. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carries 6 to 0.
Resolution 5-20, PL 5-20 by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Crawford. Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from general fund contingency to line item 7150.444.
Okay, obviously discussed in committee and committee of the whole. Any questions, comments, or concerns on, on this resolution? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carries 6 to 0.
Resolution 6-20, PL none, to confirm the mayor appointment of Lieutenant Timothy Richardson as fire chief. We're going to sponsor.
I will sponsor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So seconded by Alderman Crawford. Any comments, questions, or concerns with this resolution? Alderman Witt?
I would just like to thank Bob for all the years that he gave the city. It's a tough job, you know, and you get. Um, and as far as our new chief, um, I'm thrilled that Tim's gonna step back and be our new chief. I think we're in great hands and I think you're gonna do a wonderful job and we're lucky to have you, so congratulations.
Any other comments or questions? I just want to say how happy I am for you, Tim. Um, you know, if you had told me, when I, I remember meeting you, like, college days, nineteen ninety-nine, we were playing Playstation, uh, over wherever, wherever that was, with, with Adam, and, um, uh, that you were gonna be fire chief someday, I would have, I would have been amazed. So, I'm, I'm so happy for you, I'm so happy to vote yes on this and support this, and I think you're gonna do great things, so, um, you know, congratulations. So, anything, anyone else? Okay, uh, will the clerk please call roll?
Alderman Witt?
Absolutely.
Alderman Pence?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Certainly.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Chief? I just wanted to say I'm very pleased you, uh, you have, uh, I commanded the tent of the council as the, uh, the new fire chief. Uh, we have all this family here tonight, it's wonderful. I've known the dad for many, many years, from back to high school days, comes from good stock, gonna be a good fire chief. And I also want to thank Chief Bell for his many years of service. Uh, I think, uh, can you say you were married in seventy-four?
No, I started dating in seventy-four.
Seventy-four, okay. I'm gonna say you must have been twelve when you were there. But anyways, the chief and I go a long way back, I worked hand in hand with him, uh, many, many years, uh, in the police department. He was gonna be missed, uh, Tim had some virtues, but, uh, I'm sure, uh, he was capable of doing that, and I'm glad to see he has several members of his department here in his support, so, thank you very much. Uh, council, thank you for your support here with him, and congratulations to him.
Thank you. Congrats, buddy. Hey.
I look forward to next one.
Chief, thank you so much.
Oh, did he?
Paul Stoneyjohn, the running team. Yeah, Tim, you gotta be on the corporate challenge team for the city of Ole Miss, get ready, get ready. All right, all right. Call the team dead last? It's not the beer mile.
Resolution seven dash twenty, PL none, to request that New York State to repeal the changes affecting, effective January one, twenty twenty, to criminal procedure rules for bail, pre-trial release, and provision of discovered material to criminal defend, defendants. We're gonna need sponsor also.
Alderman Witt, sponsor?
Yes.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Doherty. Any comments, questions, or concerns on, uh, this resolution? Alderman Witt?
Thank you. Um, I think we followed suit with a lot of other communities that had the same objection, and I just think this is an overreach, and I think if anything, um, it's gonna cost the city, it's an unfunded mandate, but I think it also puts, um, our citizens, actually makes them less safe. And I know the concern is, you know, people that don't have the money to put up bail to get out of jail, but this goes way past that, so I just am totally against it and I think it really needs amended, and if all of our communities stick together with our counties and our state representatives, maybe we can get it done.
Good. Yep. Anyone else?
I guess I would, I would just add, um, that it's unfortunate that it's such massive progressive overhaul in, in legislation has to be passed at a state level that affects the rest of the state. And, and, you know, I think many of us now have seen the repercussions of individuals who are hired, uh, hired, who are, uh, arrested two or three times in one day after being let go and they go back out and they commit another crime. Um, so that, that just impacts our communities, and so, um, they need to take another look at that. So, I definitely support this.
Okay. Anyone else?
Paul, can I make a comment?
Absolutely. Alderman Smith?
Um, I don't normally like to move too hard at some, at a city council meeting, but this particular issue has really pushed me to pass the limit. Uh, I just want to read a brief sentence here of what this bill will do, uh, or has done in the state of New York. Under the new law, judges will no longer be able to set bail for a long list of misdemeanors and felon, nonviolent felonies, including stalking, assault, burglary, many drug offenses, some kinds of arson, and robbery. I read that and I wonder, is this with a partisan bill passed by a Democrat assembly, a Democrat senate, and signed by a Democrat, uh, government? I have a lot of friends who are Democrats, but I wonder if the party leadership has lost their mind. I'm just really disappointed. Uh, it is an unfunded mandate, it's gonna cost all of the cities a lot of money, but that's secondary to the safety of our families, uh, our kids, you know, uh, violent people are roaming the street because of this. The same local party endorses open borders, uh, endorses, uh, driver's licenses for illegal immigrants, sanctuary cities, I just, I hope this party does some soul searching, soul searching and, uh, cool it out, because this has gone way, way, way too far.
Okay, uh, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, uh, will the clerk please call roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Hennes?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Okay. Any last, uh, thoughts, comments, or, uh, questions before we adjourn?
Can you take it out to the ball, Paul? Can I just say one thing?
Uh, normally I would say no, but, uh, yes.
I just, this is sort of important, I just want to, to be able to know, Bob Bell, Fire Chief Bob Bell, is the longest running fire chief in the state of New York, so, that doesn't do something for you, it's not a, there's one person from New York City, correct?
Uh, one person, Long Island, brother, yeah.
One person, Long Island, brother, Robert P. Bell, the longest running fire chief in the state of New York, I think that says something, yeah. So, I think if you just take a second, just to say, thank you, maybe again, to him, and, and, I, I think it says something for his hair, for the longest time in the state of New York.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you for that time, I apologize for interrupting.
Not a problem, that was a.
The second time, we don't like.
A good point.
I want to get that out there, so, that was a poor call.
Uh, so that being said, I will make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Adjourn.
If you don't agree to adjourn.